Good evening, Eric. All right. Once again, good evening, everyone. It is Monday, March 11th. It is 7:09 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the following. Town council members are present in chambers. Persko, Kohut, Mauer, Lapellis, Formakella, O'Rourke, Duba. The following town council members here. Uh, digitally, Donalyn Wales. Uh, Kevin Reed, are you here anonymously? Please unmute yourself. All right, not hearing Kevin. We're marking as absent for now, but he should be logging in shortly. I asked that, um, are there any objections to the consent calendar? Hearing none, I'm going to pass the consent calendar as presented. I ask that communication items A through M be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. Item five, public participation. I will begin with those who are here in town council chambers. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate in this? Please come down to the microphone, name an address for the record. Hearing none, seeing none, I'm going to turn to those who are online. Is there any member of the public that is here virtually, either via their phone, their tablet, their computer, cellphone? Any of the above? Please remember, mute yourself. Do you dial in into star six? If you are here, your computer tablet or smartphone, please select the microphone with the red line. Go right to unmute yourself. Once again, is there any member of the public that's here digitally or via their phone that would like to participate at our meeting? Please remember, unmute yourself. Star six on your phone or the microphone. Deselect the microphone icon on your tablet or computer. Hearing none, seeing none, I'm going to close public participation. We have one appointment tonight. You want to be on? One moment, thirty seconds. I move that town council adopt resolution 24 dash zero three seven. Resolve that Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Paul Moise of 37 Maplewood Drive to Memorial Day Parade. Many for term ending July 1st, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Running by Jason Mauer. Uh, Paul's a longtime resident and has been practicing chiropractor in town uh, for the past 33 years. Paul has been involved with Monroe J.C.'s, established Sprinter Monroe and was a race director for over 30 years. He was a member of the bicentennial committee and served on the Memorial Day Parade when the J.C.'s were active. Paul will be running the mile down the Pike Run and proceeds will benefit veterans. Um, this fills a current vacancy. Uh, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Only that I've known, uh, Paul for a very long time.
He's served this community extremely well in multiple facets, and I think he will be a great asset to this, uh, committee.
Thank you. Um, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this passes eight just ago. Moving on to acts, my names. Item A, Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, Public Safety Matters. Uh, Madam Vice Chair.
Uh, we haven't had a meeting since our last meeting.
Thank you. Uh, item B, Town Council Command, Planning, Zoning, Public Works, and Talking Recreation Matters. Uh, council member Duba.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Item C, Town Council Command Legislative and Administrative Matters. Uh, Mr. Reed, have you dialed in? Please remember, unmute yourself. Not hearing him. Uh, I will report that LNA did meet this evening uh, and approved a number of all those resolutions that are before town council here today for our consideration. Uh, anything else to report? No, hearing none. That's that. Item D, Strategic Planning Committee. Uh, we have not met since our last town council meeting. We will meet, uh, prior, uh, to uh, our second meeting with the Board of Finance to discuss capital projects. Uh, I will work with the committee members, the first selectman, and, um, the department heads to get some clarification on some capital projects for the upcoming year. Uh, item E, Open Space Preservation and Acquisition Committee. Uh, council member O'Rourke.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you. And item F, our first selectman's.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is going to be the second time you listen to this because when we met with a, uh, the meeting with the Board of Finance, uh, there were some concerns about positions and their pay scales. So I'd just like to go through this quickly. I apologize for, uh, council having to hear in this twice, but some members of the public or people that are calling in may not have read Mr. Bittar's article on this, so. Um, operations update, as I normally do, the municipal positions update. A special project administrator is available. Uh, this position falls under the Economic and Community Development Director, Bill Holsworth. It was approved by council. This position has had some delays, mostly due to space allocated to operate. This position was posted last week. However, it has been discussed since my first day in office. There is no comparison wage available for this universal part-time job. The sanitarian position, uh, position on hold until May, uh, because we have a, a person that's, uh, that's supported by a grant. Uh, comparable wages for the sanitarian, uh, because there were some questions on that. Uh, our position pays 57 to 71. The comparable wage is in Newtown, 45 to 88. Duquesne is 64 to 86, and West Haven, 68 to 77. The high ed refers to senior sanitarian positions. Uh, this position remains open as we're doing a job description change, which we saw tonight, um, and hopefully will be adopted. Uh, we are currently training a grant-funded employee who is interested in entering this position. Uh, the WMNR Board Operator is a minimum position, uh, minimum wage position. And the police dispatcher, obviously, we are in negotiations, uh, to change, uh, that salary. However, uh, right now, uh, they are making 48, 47, to 46, oh, four annually. Uh, the new salary would cha-change the range to 55 to 64, which will make it far more compatible and help with retainage. Uh, this position was filled, uh, at one point. However, the candidate was unable to successfully complete their training. Uh, we're currently in negotiations with dispatch to Clerical Union addressing attention, recruitment, and compensation. Uh, just quickly on new hires, uh, there was some question as to what jobs were open as well and, uh, how we are replacing them. So the new hires and the positions we have hired for, uh, police records clerk, uh, P R, office clerk, assistant animal control officers, public health, emergency preparedness, police dispatcher, PNC administrator, assistant town clerk, senior center driver, P, uh, part-time zoning enforcement officer, uh, P, uh, parks, uh, public works maintainer, two of them, custodian at town elections clerk. Uh, once again, we have hired since I've been in this position 13 people. Um, and then we have some promotions with maintainers, uh, in public works as well as a crew leader. Uh, one thing I want to mention is the Edith Memorial Library. The Strategic Planning Committee at the library would like to invite town council, town commissions, and Monroe residents to join in on a conversation about the direction of the library to talk about ideas and issues that will affect the future of the library for the next four years. The conversations will be happening on March 13th. And March 19th from 6:30 to 7:30, there will be light refreshments served. RSVP to, uh, Nicole, Nicole Signoli at ewml.org by March 12th, uh, or 18th. If you're unable to attend, there's a community survey available at the library with a QR code to take the survey online. Uh, emergency services update, all I have for today is the MS. Uh, there was an ambulance being fixed. The ambulance has received a new motor and is waiting to be inspected by the state before returning to the road. And our capital projects update, we'll be scheduling a meeting with the town attorney, Department of Public Works, Finance Director, and Town Engineer to discuss the project status and closeout. Um, on a community update, which is what I do, uh, when I visit the community for different reasons, uh, basically, uh, you know, with the budget, I haven't had much free time, but I did attend the robotics competition. I had mentioned that last council that I was attending the following day. I attended a robotics competition hosted by Massey High School and Bill McDonough. Congratulations to our teams that headed up to the world championships. I was asked to judge, however, after a few hours I had to leave due demands at town hall, but it was a great event and congratulations to our young programmers and builders. And I believe in a short period of time, our Massey High School hockey team is in the semifinal, so that's pretty exciting. They won the states last year. Um, as far as grants, uh, a LoCIP grant came through, local capital improvement program of $203,075.81 was awarded to the town of Monroe. Uh, this grant will be used for improvement of roads, bridges, or public building construction activities. And that's all I have. Mr. Chairman, thank you very.
Thank you very much. Who is the, uh, one, just kind of taking questions first, but you have something for us.
I do.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Selectman, I did have a couple of constituents reach out and wanted to know if the selectman had any plans on, uh, providing these updates, the bi-weekly updates, either via Facebook on the town site or via email blast that people could sign up to.
Yeah, the first selectman's update will be put on the website after tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
But they can also call my office. Have them call. No problem.
Mr. Reed has. It is 7:23. Mr. Reed, that's right.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry for being late.
Um, okay. So anything else? No? Okay, that's first selectman's update. We have no matters of unfinished business tonight. Uh, Mr. Town Attorney, do you have a motion for us to consider?
I, I do, uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, I'm requesting that, um, the council consider and, and someone, uh, propose a motion to add it to the agenda this evening. As you, um, as you recall, um, at your last meeting, um, there was a, an amendment presented, uh, by way, uh, the intent of the amendment was to, uh, amend and reinstate the agreement that the town has with St. Jude regarding the expanded use of that school building for, uh, parks and rec, uh, services as well as, uh, upcoming election services. And my understanding is that, uh, this body, uh, gave certain authority to the first selectman. Uh, but as a result, um, since that time, uh, there's been a slight change in the terms, the material term, what I consider to be a material term of that agreement. Therefore, I've added that change to a new agreement. And I think just to, uh, as a belt and suspenders, uh, a method, I'd ask that you, uh, add, consider adding the new agreement, which I brought copies for everybody this evening as well as an opinion letter uh, for consideration, just to add that as a new business item to the agenda.
Thank you. Uh, does it have a new, uh, resolution number provided or no?
Uh, there's no new resolution number. I did not provide a resolution, but, uh, I can hand this up to you.
Yeah.
Thank you. There's an opinion letter in one folder and there's advice.
Yeah, if you want, thank you, thank you, Sean.
They're not stapled. Mr. O'Rourke, I apologize.
Uh, I move the town council add an item to our agenda, item G, uh, which will be referred to as Resolution 24 dash zero four three, uh, to speak about, uh, the St. Jude Agreement for, updated agreement provided by the town attorney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jason Mauer. Any discussion?
I, I just ask that, uh, I, I believe to consider an act rather than just to speak on, are we planning on acting on it tonight?
Uh, we are going to, it is added to our agenda. We, this is the, this is the mere amendment to amend our agenda. There will be a subsequent motion to adopt the changes as well. I mean, there also has to be another, uh, rule change, but that's fine. Okay, this is purely adding Resolution 24 dash zero four three to the agenda to discuss. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this passes, uh, nine to zero, adding the item to the agenda. I further move that the town council waive Rule 13 of our rules of procedure. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ben Duba. Uh, the reason why, uh, Rule 13 meets the, uh, waived in this case, uh, we, we have received the, uh, town attorney's agreement as well as its letter of opinion. Um, we did not consider this during LNA. This is forthful consideration by the town council. This motion would merely waive the requirement for it to go to LNA prior to town council's approval. Is there any, uh, other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of waiving Rule 13 for Resolution Item G, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this passes nine to zero. Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Town Attorney, would you like to have it considered first?
Excuse me?
Would you like this item?
It's your prerogative, sir. I'll be here the entire meeting, so it's up to you.
We're all geared up.
Perfect, okay. Um, so, uh, as I indicated, um, and, and thank you for considering the, uh, the amendment that I prepared last time. Um, yeah, my understanding is, uh, from, from my review, I'm sorry. Did you not have one? You left your cellphone? Um, so I'll be brief. Um, there was a proposed third amendment. My understanding is this body, um, preferred, uh, a new agreement. Um, therefore, heading to be as efficient as possible, gave the first authority to enter into that new agreement. Um, the premise, I suppose, was that the terms of the amendment as proposed were to be incorporated, uh, as the material terms of that new agreement. However, uh, since, um, the preparation of a new agreement provided, uh, an additional level of scrutiny to be, uh, to review that agreement by, uh, St. Jude, uh, although the amendment was agreed to and I believe executed, um, upon further discussion and presentation of the new agreement to St. Jude, um, there was a demand that what was previously, a new use without charge to the town, uh, was amended so that St. Jude now thinks it's more appropriate, uh, that the town pays $75 per hour for the new use, and the new use being defined as, uh, primary or election services used by the registrar voters. Uh, so that material term was not in the amendment, was not presented to council. I didn't think it would be appropriate. I, by first electman that, I didn't think that it would be appropriate for him to execute a new agreement with that new material term. Uh, and therefore I added it to the new reinstated amended agreement. And, uh, that's the basis for my presentation to you this evening. I've just again, as belt and suspenders, it was not one last time. I prepared a letter of, uh, opinion approving this new agreement and kind of taking everybody through for the record, um, what had happened. Uh, so that's essentially it. Uh, the terms of this new agreement, uh, essentially are the same as the amendment. I will get into my opinion about why I think the amendment was more than sufficient. Uh, but this new, uh, agreement, uh, simply is now referred to as a reinstated and amended agreement. It specifically references twice now that reinstated and amended prior agreement. Uh, it did have language in there, uh, in the amendment, which basically said that the agreement, um, agreement of terms, covenants, and conditions, the agreement will remain full force in effect, which I think is tantamount to reinstatement, but it now has language that reinstates and incorporates by reference the original agreement, all the amendments to that agreement, uh, and, uh, now with new terms.
Thank you. And thank you, Attorney Lido, for all your diligence in this matter. Um, is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilmember Duba.
Mr. Chair, before we move, do we have a motion on the floor to actually approve the?
We, we, we don't actually. Um, so I, I will, I will take, I will take care of this. Um, so I move that the town council adopt Resolution 24 dash zero four three. Uh, resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the reinstated and amended license agreement binding between St. Jude Roman Catholic Church Corporation and the town of Monroe. Any associated documents binding between, uh, the town of Monroe and St. Jude Roman Catholic Church Corporation, uh, for, uh, the use of, uh, their facility. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Jason Mauer. Uh, council member Duba.
Um, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to note and, and let, um, Attorney Lido know I did vote no the last time. I didn't see the need. Um, but as he did the work, I, I think it'll satisfy their other council members. I will vote yes this time.
Very much. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Mauer.
I just want to thank Attorney Lido for, uh, his work on this. Uh, I, I appreciate, uh, you, you going spat on here. Uh, I would point out that, uh, with, while there is the fee, there was another matter reciprocal usage, uh, upon afterwards that was consideration in the amendment that is not part of the new agreement. So there's a different sort of consideration. So it was consideration in either of the two.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
And I just like to add, I did go back to the registrar voters because it did significantly change their budget. Uh, there was an increase in cost after this. I did talk to, um, the registrar voters and they are covered, uh, in that cost. They did budget enough to cover that.
Okay, and thank you, registrar's voter for your. Let's take both of you. Um, any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 24 dash zero four three, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes nine to zero. Uh, moving on to item A, uh, the acceptance of the following donations that duly exceed $5,900. I move the town council accept the following donation to the Monroe Food Pantry, $3,999.43 from John Van Camp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kathy Coat. Uh, Mr. First Selectman, anything?
Uh, no, just thank you, everyone who donates consistently. As you know, organizations in town, it's very helpful. We appreciate everybody's donations. It seems the EMS knocks it out of the park every single council. But, uh, once again, you know, these funds go a long way for all the different programs and different things they do for the community. So thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the donation, please say aye.
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 Me against? Hearing none, passes nine to zero. Uh, item B, Resolution 24 forty-eight, Madam Vice Chair.
I move the town council adopt Resol- Resolution 24 dash zero three eight. Resolve that the town council hereby approves the revised job description and authorizes the first selectman to implement as soon as practical.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by. Uh, Mr. First Selectman, anything?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you recall, the approval FY '23 budget of full-time sanitarian position was funded. In the Health Department, following that, a new job description description was reviewed and adopted under Resolution Number 22 dash 69. The Director of Health has requested that the sanitarian job description be adjusted to Sanitarian Health Program Planner One and Sanitarian Health Program Planner Two. Uh, please find attached protein, uh, proposed, uh, proposed changes to this position. And, uh, it comes with a letter of opinion from the town attorney as well as went through LNA. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 24 dash zero three eight, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, passes nine to zero. Item C, Resolution 24 dash zero three nine, Madam Chair, Vice Chair.
Resolution regarding 2024 Local Capital Improvement Program LoCIP Grant Certification. I move that the town council adopt Resolution 24 dash oh three nine. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the certification and the associated documents binding between the State of Connecticut for the Local Capital Improvement Program LoCIP Grant.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, is there a second? Second, by Jason Mauer. Mr. First Selectman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The State of Connecticut has awarded the town of Monroe $203,075.81 through the fiscal year 24 Local Capital Improvement Program Grant, uh, LoCIP. This grant distributes formula-based funds to municipalities for eligible local capital improvement projects such as roads, bridges, or public building construction activities pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 7 dash 535 through 7 dash 538. The grant is processed through a certification which is attached for your review. This also comes with a letter of opinion from our town attorney. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any, uh, other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 24 dash zero three nine, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, passes nine to zero. Moving on to D, Resolution 24 dash zero four zero, Madam Vice Chair.
Resolution regarding Avenue Enterprise Solutions Property Fraud Alert Agreement. Resolve. Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe any associated documents binding between Avenue Enterprise Solutions for the Property Fraud Alert License Agreement.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So that was a motion to adopt Resolution 24 dash zero four zero. Is there a second?
Second.
By Ben Duba? Uh, Mr. First Selectman.
Uh, thank you. Um, this is part of a step of cybersecurity initiatives. Uh, when having a meeting, the town clerk brought to, uh, our attention this program. Uh, this is a great idea. So Avenue Enterprise Solutions currently provides the town clerk's office with information, technology products, software and related materials for land records, management, and dog licensing. Licensing Avenue offers a property fraud alert system that can be installed virtually overnight and is user-friendly. This is an electronic system that alerts a registered user, a property owner, via email of any new transactions that have occurred regarding their properties, such as a mortgage or quick claim deed. The cost for installing this program is $3,000 and will be offered free to property homeowners. This program would be managed and paid for by the town's clerk office and is not a budgetary item, as well as what we learned in LNA, that it, there is not a continued cost, uh, because our town clerk had done a great job and negotiated that. So thank you very much, uh, Mr. Stone. This also comes with a letter of opinion from our town attorney.
Thank you very much. Uh, does the town clerk want to say anything about this? I know she's here, so.
Oh, um, it's just, you do need this. Um, everybody knows, most people know what happened in Fairfield. And this was brought up a while ago, um, to look into. So, um, this is available. It's, it's, you can finally, um, it's, that's.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion? Uh, Mr. Mauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as our town clerk mentioned, this was brought up a while ago. I had asked about this after many, uh, a lot of constituents had reached out after what happened in Fairfield. Uh, during the last administration, I had asked about this and I see the hard work that our town clerk did. I think this is, for, for such a small cost, something that is such a vital, uh, addition to our town and a vital service to provide our taxpayers. So thank, thank you to our town clerk for all the hard work, not only in identifying a solution that will help, but also in negotiating a great rate for that solution. So I just want to give credit where credit is due and say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 24 dash zero four zero, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, this passes nine to zero. Moving on to item E. I move that the town council adopt Resolution 24 dash zero four one. Resolve that the town council hereby accepts and ratifies tentative agreement binding between the town of Monroe and the Monroe Police Union, Union Paternal Order of Police Lodge 50, and that Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to prepare and execute a final agreement pursuant to this tentative agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ben Duba, Mr. First Selectman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, we met in LNA, spoke about, uh, this agreement. I just, this is a very needed thing for the police department for multiple reasons, uh, for retention, for future, uh, employment and things of that nature. As we know, uh, law enforcement has drastically lost its luster for the general public to get involved. And we have a very good police department here. We'd like to retain them. We'd like to keep them working for us as long as possible. There are a lot of transient moves based on who's offering a better deal. Uh, I believe that this contract brings us up to speed. It allows us to compete with our neighbors and our officers will be very satisfied if this is approved. So I hope this council will approve this contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-041, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, passes nine to zero. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and finally, for new business, item F, Fiscal Year 25 Budget. So...
You want it?
Joe, I'm here, the budget discussion? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So, let's see what we want to do. I think what we're gonna do is we will, I will first turn over the first selectman if he has anything to say finally on the budget. At that point, I will entertain motions to adjust the budget as presented and we'll individually vote on each of those. And then we'll direct our wonderful finance department to come up with a number as fast as they can so that we can vote on it tonight. Okay? So, Mr. First Selectman, anything you want to say before there are motions?
Uh, thank you.
For your 24-25 budget.
No, I don't have a lot, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, in our joint meeting, I pretty much expressed how I felt about certain things. Uh, we did discuss the increase in the library that was removed by myself during the budget cycle. The main reason for that move is that there is, uh... The library comes in under budget for the last few years. And so we didn't necessarily see the need through those meetings to add to a budget that was already not completely met. However, after meeting with Nicole, she did express that she did include the remainder of that budget and she believes she needs this to do some of the programs. I went over there, I did meet with her. She has a very clean professional operation. Many families do use it more so than many people would think. So I am in favor if this council decides to add that. I mean, it's, uh, that's just my advisement. I don't know that she'll spend it. And I think the, my finance director and assistant finance director would might say, uh, there's a possibility she won't spend it, but at least it's there if she needs it. So, um, I am in approval of that. Uh, the other thing, the Center for Family Justice, I have talked and met with Deb Greenwood, uh, Deb Greenwood many, many times. We have discussed it. We do have, we do benefit from that program significantly. Those metrics are true, $86,000, I think, and in the area of 270 some odd families. I mean, I'm just going off the top of my head. But they do provide a service for this town that is needed. They do do a great job. So I am not opposed to any donation made that direction. I did talk to Deb Greenwood today. She had no idea that this was being sought, so she was kind of surprised. But happily surprised. So if that's the move that this council wants to make, I would definitely support that. So, um, other than that, that is all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And I hope you would adopt this budget. A lot of due diligence went in to this budget. A lot of people and a lot of hours, a lot of hours. So, uh, yeah, I just hope that this council agrees with this budget and moves it forward. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. First Selectman. Are there any motions to make any alteration to the municipal budget as presented? Uh, Mr. Mauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the budget as presented be adjusted upwards on line 100...
Page number?
Uh, page 169. library salary part-time upward $10,320, the same that was, uh, removed during the first selectman adjustment.
There's been a motion to add $10,320 to the, uh, library salary part-time line item by Mr. Mauer. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice Chair Lapelis, Mr. Mauer, issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the first selectman touched on, uh, I think based off of the department head meetings that we have and based off of Selectman's own meeting with the library, it would be prudent to add this back in. It certainly is an area where the taxpayers get a significant service for the price here. And the more that the library can grow and offer services to our town, the better. So giving them the opportunity to do so would be great, obviously. In coming years, we can revisit if funds aren't used and, uh... But let's give them the opportunity to provide more services.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mauer. I will, uh, the only thing I will say is I will, uh... This is an item that we should look at next year to see if the funds were appropriately used and applied as to this year as for, uh, as we will potentially add this year. So is there any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, passes nine to zero. Are there any other alterations?
Mr. Chair?
Councilmember first?
Uh, I would like to motion to add a line item, uh, page 164, Budget Social Service Department 0710, to add in a line 1001-10-15109-0710-53566, Social Services, a donation to the Center for Family Justice for $10,000.
Okay, so, uh, the only thing I'll ask is, uh, finance department, is that an appropriate place to put that?
Yeah. What calls it from?
Yeah, so... It's, uh, we've had donations like this historically, rather than in the Department of Social Services, uh, is it other programs? So... Top page 29 of the budget.
Page 10.
Two muscles.
So under, uh, special programs, we could, basically, we could repurpose one of those accounts that have not been used. They currently exist. That currently exist. But don't appear here. We would happen to change the name of the district. Okay. Yeah, so like the special programs, Mastic Well Monitoring, that was an, that's an account that's been, uh, stale for a couple of years now. It's when they, uh, some oil spilled at the school number here. And you could just recode them. Exactly. Do you want to, do you want to? So I don't know if you want to get that specific on the motion to an account or if you just want, because I know at the end you guys just add, you guys just vote on one number. So we can find a, an appropriate home for it within special programs, if that works. Perfect. Councilmember Priscilla, would you mind withdrawing your motion? Just making again to add a line of a donation of $10,000 to the Center for Family Justice, which will be housed under special programs?
A motion to remove my...
Oh, no, 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 you're just withdrawing, just withdraw.
Withdraw, got it.
And then make that new motion.
Okay, okay. Uh, I, I'd like to make a motion to add to the special programs, a donation to the Center for Family Justice.
Name out. Name out.
$10,000.
$10,000, thank you very... So there is a motion to add $10,000 to special programs under a undesignated, uh, programmed number and title, which will be added by the Department of Finance at some point during this budget cycle to reflect that change. Is there a second? Uh, I'll send it to Vice Chair Lapelis. Uh, Councilmember Priscilla?
Uh, yes, uh, it was about two weeks ago. Nick Kapor, uh, asked us about adding this to our budget and I did a little homework and I talked to Marissa Donnelly, who was a Monroe resident who works at the Center for Family Justice, um, and asked her about it and what other towns do. And she did let me know that Monroe, uh, just in the fiscal, last fiscal year, the Center for Family Justice spent, um, $86,961 on constituents of Monroe for their services. So I know some other towns also donate to them. Some of them use grant money. Uh, we do not have grant money to give them. So I would like to suggest adding $10,000 to help with their services that they provide to their...
Thank you very much. The only thing I will say is that there are other towns that do give money and it's through the program, uh, through grant program. And so maybe that is something that we can look towards in consideration for next year, uh, to replace the use of taxpayer dollars in the circumstance, but for next year. Is there any other discussion on adding, uh, on this motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilmember Duvall?
Another verb was add a line, but I thought it, it sounds like it makes more sense and especially for finance to change a line, change the name. Um, it would also look better to take out some line that we're not really using anymore. So I think the language should be to change a line and not add another one.
I, I am, would you accept that amendment? Okay, is that a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay, we have a motion to replace a line. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Any other discussion? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Hearing no, opposed, passes nine to zero. The amendment, now we're voting on the main motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, before we...
Is there any other discussion, Mr. Mauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that, uh, I hope I'd be agreed with your assessment that, uh, if we can look, uh, for grant money for either in addition or in lieu, depending on what we're able to find, for future years, I think that would be a great thing to do, not just for the town, but also for this wonderful cause. So I just wanted to put my endorsement on that as well to, to look into that for future uses, even though it won't be for this fiscal year.
Very much. Any other discussion? Councilmember Rourke?
Just to, just to clarify, the dollar amount we're talking about for this item?
It's $10,000.
$10,000.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of making this change, which effectively adds $10,000 to the special programs directed towards, the Center for Family Justice? Is there anything else? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, passes nine to zero. Are there any other motions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Uh, yes, Councilmember McCohut?
Um, a motion to increase the, uh, social worker position found under... Community and Social Services from a part-time to a full-time position.
The page number?
Yes, I'm gonna tell you that, I believe it is 164.
Thank you.
And I believe it is line 1001-10-15109-0710-15005.
85, no, no.
Uh, here 05, it's on page...
Zero, triple 05.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And that's to adjust, uh, to a, uh, full-time position?
From part-time to full-time, yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Lapelis. Councilmember McCohut?
Thank you. I believe that it was, uh, clearly indicated by the director of our Social Services Department that this current social worker is working far in excess of her part-time hours and expending personal time, including on the weekends. Uh, she also indicated that, uh, the need had increased and that the need for a full-time social worker was clear. And for those reasons, I am, uh, requesting, making this request.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Councilmember Mauer?
Uh, I just have a question of our finance director of, because we need to pass a number of, if we have even a approximate number of what that would look like.
Increase the position from part-time to full-time?
Yes.
Would be, uh, fully loaded with benefits, uh, $55,000, $850?
$55,000, $850 additional?
Additional. Salary and benefits? Yes. $55,000, $850? $850.
And also just a point of clarification that there's multiple part-time, uh...
So this would only be one?
Under that line, this is only for increasing the social services, uh, to work, social worker position.
Yeah, so that is a fully loaded number. So it would impact multiple lines, which we have there. Any other discussion? Uh, what I would say is that this, this item was brought up during our, uh, our department meetings. What I, what I would say is, uh, this was not brought up during, it's my understanding, was not brought up during and the first selectman's department meetings while, uh, he was conducting those with the department head so that he could more fully engage with and address the concerns of this line item. Is that true, Mr. First Selectman?
Yeah, I mean, it, it was just never an ask. You know, there's been some cursory conversations, but, um, there were no asks for additional wages and things there. So unless there's an ask, it's hard to respond to it. So, um, the, uh, the conversation that night was somewhat surprising to me because you sit in meetings and you talk and you talk and you talk and it was never really a conversation, a, a, a strong conversation in that direction. But, you know, um, everybody can use more help. So, I think, um... Any chance there is to grab a little bit more help in many departments, I think people will reach for that. So I, uh... I don't know that it's completely needed. But if this council feels the need to apply it based on what everybody has heard, then so be it. Thank you.
I'll take the, the selectman's advice and I'm gonna vote no against it.
Any other discussion? Council, uh, you already got it. So, uh, Councilmember Rourke?
The, the need or, you know, the, the position that Ms. Kowat has raised here is one of awareness and one that we could probably look forward to revisiting here on the next budget cycle whereby it would be formally requested in the budget process, uh, window. And I, I think that might be the best way to handle this with regards to moving forward on this, on a requested budgetary item on the next cycle.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I just gotta say to everybody who has it before. Is there any other discussion? Uh, Mr. Mauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And in thinking about this and hearing the conversation from the first selectman, as well as fellow council members, I wonder if, uh, in addition to possibly looking at it for future budget cycles, if it might be more right for a withdrawal of the motion and a request for the Board of Finance to look at this as an adjustment on their side after the selectman and, uh, Board of Finance has had a chance to, uh, talk more with the department head and see what the direct and immediate needs are and then leave it in the Board of Finance's capable hands to decide whether or not to make an adjustment there, but, um, get some more information before any decision is made.
I mean, all I would say is if they could be able to draw the motion, of course, the Board of Finance will have its own hearing. And so anyone on this council, just like any member of the public, could discuss that line item if they so chose. I'm not in the business of directing the Board of Finance to do anything. But if there's a withdrawal of the motion, I don't see anything wrong with someone going to the Board of Finance and saying, hey, look at this or that. So if, is there any other action before we go to vote?
It was Terry's motion.
Yes, Kathy's, Kathy's forming a sentence even as we, as we speak. Uh, in, 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 in light of the Board of Finance having, not having reviewed the budget in full as yet, waiting for, you know, several meetings going forward, I will withdraw my motion at this time.
Thank you.
And propose it to the Board of Finance.
Thank you. The motion's been withdrawn. Are there any other motions tonight?
Yes, one more, Mr. Chair.
You were recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, uh, am making a motion to create a position and quite frankly, I don't know where it will fall. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I uh am making a motion to create a position, and quite frankly, I don't know where it would fall, although I suspect under the budget of the Human Relations Department, the H R department, uh, to create a-
What department again? I missed that.
H R, H R, uh, to create a position for a grant writer. And that could be a full or part-time position.
Um, just one clarification on that, um as we're giving an update in our uh town council department meetings about filling uh certain vacant seats, one of which included the part-time grant writer, would this be in substitution of that?
Sorry, I was, I, my, this that I would suggest then that it be a full-time grant writer position.
Okay, and can I just confirm with Bill Holsworth that that it's, I made an accurate statement that there is a part-time position that is going to work for that?
There is.
Okay, so you would like to adjust that line item to be a full-time position?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Alright, uh, and I'm going to have to ask for our Department of Finance to uh locate the appropriate uh adjustment numbers. So
the uh, you know, having this uh proposed motion uh relayed to us in advance, we did do some research, um and found that a full-time grant writer would fall somewhere between sixty and eighty-five thousand dollars, eighty-five thousand being New Canaan, sixty being New Milford. So we felt Monroe would probably fall somewhere in between, so we used seventy thousand. Now, I did not, I, I did it as a full-time loaded position, uh, full-time loaded grant writer, a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, at a seventy thousand dollar salary. Um, so we would just need to back out the uh part-time position in economic development to come up with a national position.
Okay, so it's going to be in economic development.
Mr. Chairman, are we on the discussion part of the motion? Are we?
No, we, we, we're trying to appropriately place it
Okay.
where we would, and uh, I'm sure Council-
Just-
Councilmember McCollough will amend her motion in the right line.
I, yes, I, I will certainly do so.
It's fine, we're all wearing-
Mr. Chair.
Alright, so where's it, it's uh, so triple zero five?
Page?
Eighty, sixty-eight. So, so where would it go? Triple zero five?
Yeah.
This second, the salary part-time? Yeah, so that's gonna be Xed out. Oh, that's what the motion is.
It's what the motion is.
Motion is to X out the part-time salary and it would be, or be renamed, what, what's the, our Department of Finance's preference? What's your preference on how it's labeled and what you want it to be?
Well, it, it, um the, being in the part, uh, part-time uh account wouldn't fit any longer, so we'd probably go up to the admin.
So it'll go to admin, or do you want like to take off the P and T, make it no longer part-times?
Yeah. Yeah, so we'd have to add a new account with an object, which is the last six-digit number of one five zero 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 three.
Okay, that's member uh McCollough, which you I will adopt that into your motion?
I will adopt uh the line item number of one five zero zero three for a full-time grant writer position.
As well as the amount for, uh, of the increase?
And the increase would be to one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
Actually, the net increase.
Okay, the net-
Difference between the two, I mean, it's fully loaded, but it's uh eight, eighty-eight, seven, eleven, eighty-eight thousand.
That is the increase, eighty, of an increase of eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars.
Seven eleven, so? Okay. Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Jason Mauer. Alright, discussion, uh Councilmember McCollough.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, it is my opinion based on what I'm seeing about the availability of grants and the amount of money that the town can garner from proper uh grant, um, um, research and execution will far outweigh the current cost or the increase to the town of the eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. Uh, clearly, we've already seen the value of grant funding just by the current grant we discussed at this meeting uh today, so I believe that uh to do otherwise at this point in time would be, in fact, penny wise and pound foolish uh when we can access monies that are available. And a full-time person dedicated to doing nothing but seeking grants and um monies for the various departments of the town, so that each department head already overloaded is not focusing on finding grants when there may be substantially more money out there available to fund programs that will not, or other required capital improvements, uh, potentially positions uh that can be grant funded would be a dramatic savings to the town.
Thank you, Councilmember McCollough. Uh, the first selectman wanted a discussion. First select.
Yeah, uh, thank you very much. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, so there's a few things that uh can be said about this. One is, I do know some grant writers being from Bridgeport, and I spoke to them, and they've written some pretty significant grants um in cities and in towns. And what I, the feedback that I've received is that they really enjoy working off of a retainer and getting a percentage. Um, that being said, I just cursory looked into that, made some phone calls to try to understand. Uh, but I think the most important part of this is uh Bill Holsworth uh in his job description is uh writing grants, and I think he's had a large amount of success. I did want to prepare a document of all of the uh grants that he has achieved. Unfortunately, I asked him for it this morning. And uh, it's an arduous task to get all that information in a short time, but uh Bill has uh worked diligently on getting grants money and, uh, grant money and has, has had a significant amount of success without a piece of that grant money going to an outside individual. Um, not that I can't see the possibility of maybe achieving some more grants, and I've spoken about it uh in the past, but now that I sit here and I see what Bill does, I uh I am thankful for the amount of time he spends on those grants. This part-time position will loosen him up to do other things and help, uh it will give us another advantage as far as grant writing, and I just don't I personally don't feel being in this position every day that a full-time position is absolutely necessary. I, I would suggest work, uh, have Bill work with this part-time position that's now out there to see what kind of advances that part-time position gives us, and then maybe move from there. It's, it's, it's another step into getting um, maybe more advantageous, I guess, in the area of grants, so that's just my humble opinion, working here every day with Bill, seeing what he does, knowing what he does, that I think this position, if we, when we hire, um, I think that'll be a good help. Once again, obviously, I'm on the conservative side of things. I don't like to increase the budget unless it's data-based. And I think the ask is justified. Um, however, I think maybe it's better we try with the part-time position first, and that's just my humble opinion on that, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, can we hear from our Economic Development Director? Hello?
Bill, I want to say, it's, it's great to see you walking up.
It's great to be walking, thank you. Thank you for noticing. Good evening, Councilmembers. Um, so Terry did ask me for a, a budget document, um, but I wanted to spend my time actually getting work done. I did put it together, I just did not put it together in a formal method that I can, I can uh distribute this evening, but um the things that we've done um in the last year, because I prepared this for last week when, when we met individually. Uh, in the last year, we submitted grants, a million-dollar grant, the D E C D, as the Community Challenge Grant, where we partnered with the County Trumbull to seek sewer connections for uh four and seventy-one eighty Main Street to help with that mixed-use development. We've also submitted a million-dollar Oswald grant to purchase the Benedict property, and there we partnered with the Aspetuck Land Trust. We uh submitted a one-million-dollar grant with the C D B G grant uh with Connecticut Housing Partners to build an age-restricted forty-nine units of affordable housing at one ninety-five and two-eleven Main Street. Um, most recently, we did a five-thousand-dollar grant with the Farmers Market, a hundred-thousand-dollar grant with the Jockey Hollow STEM Library. Um, and in recently, we've received the following grants. We've received a hundred and fifty thousand with Wolf Park Basketball Courts, two-hundred-thousand-dollar STEM computer lab upgrades, two-hundred-thousand dollars from the Senior Center Septic, and a five-hundred-thousand-dollar STEEP grant for the animal control facility. In addition, we're working on additional grants. We're working on the Emergency Management Performance Grant. This is uh, this covers the cost of radio communications. So I looked at the capital budget over the next five years, and on that budget, we have EMS radios, we need thirty of those radios. They're about a hundred thousand dollars. In addition, Stevenson Fire Department requires three mobile radios for an additional thirty-six thousand. So I'm preparing grant applications now at a hundred and thirty-six thousand, of which the town would be responsible for a fifty percent match. We have congressionally-directed spending, which is done by the uh, the Congressman, Congressman High, Congressman Murphy. Uh, that's where we got the two-hundred-thousand dollars for both the STEM labs and the Senior Center Septic. Uh, it's a pond that I've had luck fishing in. I'm gonna fish there again. I'm looking at a rural development facilities grant. Um, I'm putting those dollars either towards uh work on the new community center or for a generator for the, for the high school. The D O J, the Department of Justice, has a grant. It's the TOPS Law Enforcement Technology Grant. I believe that grant would cover body cameras, which are two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars according to the capital budget. There is an EPA grant to address air pollution um within schools. I don't believe we have an air pollution problem at our schools, however, in our capital budget, there's a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar line item for a system-wide HVAC assessment, which I feel that grant would um adequately address. D O T has a Safe Streets Grant. Uh, it's broken up into three parts. There is a study part, there's a demonstration part, and then there's an implementation part. I'd like to move forward with the study part to see how uh we might be able to implement complete streets in the town. And then there's a EPA Climate Pollution Grant uh that would cover geothermal uh heating and things of that nature, which is something that I know that the first selectman has been pushing me on to look at for the, the new community center. Uh, so the things that I pay most, most attention to, um, and as these salaries get discussed and how they're going to be paid, I am adamantly against a portion of those grant funds going towards that salary that just takes money out of the town pocket and does not align that individual's work ethic with what the town is trying to accomplish. Um, but I do look at the eligibility and I do look at the match odds, and those are the two key things that um I overlap with the, with the capital budgets to see where and when we can get money to help fund these things. So, so far, it's about a little, just over a million dollars that has been brought in through, through my part-time work on, on doing grants. But there are over a hundred grants a year that get looked at. Um, there are grants that are done by the Police Department, and the Police Department own those grants, they write those grants. The library does the same, the Senior Center does the same. Uh, many departments come to me and ask me for help, which I gladly give to them. They're trying to bring other departments in that may have input into that grant writing, to make it more uh a stronger application, because many of these grants are competitive.
Thank you, Mr. Holsworth. Uh, just a quick question. As uh, as the budget is currently proposed, uh, if we fill the part-time position that's available, will that give you adequate help in applying for uh these various grants?
It, it will, it will help from a start, yes.
And, and so, um, do you believe that, um I, I, I guess, is that part-time position sufficient for what you would like to do in applying for grants?
Yes.
Okay, and so you're not asking us, uh, a full-time person?
Not at this time. Not at this.
You believe that you can handle that uh for this fiscal year?
I believe so.
With the additional?
Yes.
Okay, uh, any other, uh, who hasn't gone yet? You went? You went? Alright, uh, Jason, I don't think it's-
Fine on this subject.
Oh, alright, well, go Sean.
I knew he set you up.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Holsworth. Uh, E D C has, has demonstrated a high level of competency uh in, in the past few years. Uh, I believe with uh Bill Holsworth assisting the new part-time position, uh, I have a high degree of confidence that the uh grant applications uh process will be sufficiently covered. With that being said, uh, I'm willing to consider uh in the future to look at a full-time grant writer uh position should the uh metrics uh uh support that uh, that, that move in the next budget cycle.
Thank you, Mr. Holsworth. Uh, the only, the only thing I, I, and I will, I know, a couple of the people I want to talk, but the only thing I would I would say, at least my input would be, is why don't we see how the part-time position works this year and then reassess next year? Uh, but, Mr. Mauk, I believe you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm a firm believer in, in, in grant writing, being, bringing in a lot of money for the town. I certainly think that a full-time grant writer would bring in more than the eighty-eight-thousand-dollar difference. That being said, um, is it just based off of what was just said, is it your position that we should not use outside grant writers who take a portion of the grant at all?
That would not be, that would not be a direction I would want to go.
I, 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 I wholeheartedly disagree with that statement, in that uh you, we, but there's no reason we can't do both, and money is money. Um, in that we can pursue the grants that we can do on our own, on our own, but there are lots and lots of grants out there that we, we don't have the manpower bandwidth to pursue, even with a full-time position, I don't know that we would have that manpower bandwidth. My, my recommendation would actually, and, and this would uh be a difficult question to answer considering that position, would be to possibly add a small amount into the marketing and development line with the purpose of that small amount being to add, basically to try to woo and advertise in some of these outside grant writers to take on grants that we are not pursuing, to both identify and write grants that we're not pursuing. We're talking about uh no really outside costs to us, and only a benefit of what they bring in, that is not what we're already doing. There are plenty of contractual aspects of, uh only paying them for grants that they bring in that we were not already looking at, that we can that, when they would propose a grant, all we would have to do is show that we were already aware of that grant, and then that we can still write in on our own, but if they bring in us something that we're not aware of, I think it's, it's uh important that we have other sources showing that to us. So I guess my question to you would be, if there were a small amount put into a budget for, in your marketing and development expenses for that purpose, how much do you think you would need to, just, literally just as basically advertising, listing out to some of these external grant writers, um, to try to get them to come in and uh propose some grants that we're not already looking at?
I think that would be a question for H R. For what that would cost.
Just so happens. That are H R.
If I can just add on to that just really quick, I think it's important when we look at these grants to understand, a lot of these uh grants are given when you have shovel-ready projects, things that are prepared, and you say, hey, we have this project and we'd like to do it. You need to have things ready for a lot of these bigger grants. Also, remember the term, you know, free isn't free. Right? So a lot of these large grants take a significant amount of buy-in from the town, so if you were looking for, say, a twenty-million-dollar grant, the buy-in in the town might be five million or whatever the percentage is, so just I just want to not, I'm not assuming that people on council don't understand this, but I just want to bring it to the attention of every one of you that there is a buy-in for a lot of these big grants, they're significant. Being a small town, um, there would have to be a lot of conversations about some of those, that's all.
Thank you. Um, I, I'm just gonna go to uh Councilmember first still, who has spoken.
Thank you. Uh, one of the takeaways I had from the department meetings last week was, Bill, that you wear many, many hats. And uh, do you, I think this- And uh, do you, I think this is basically going along with, with what Jason was asking you about the part-time position that we have open. Uh, be, if this does not pass tonight, will you keep us informed of once that person is hired and how, maybe next year when we're talking about this? If you feel like you need, I know.
Absolutely.
Keep us informed, I feel like that communication will go a long way, not just hearing it at the budget meeting when we have it once a year, um, I think that's beautiful, thank you.
Yeah, if I could add to that, Councilman Persico, uh, Councilman Persico. Uh, that's why, if you noticed on my updates, I put grants. Um, I've been trying to incorporate some of the things that are of concern that is council in the community to address them um, you know, bi-weekly basis. And uh, I think I've put a couple of grants on here before, but this is the big one in LNA, Jason said, I'm wrong for this, but uh, but yeah, I mean, as the grants come in, I'll certainly keep you, I'll be putting them on there so we see them and then if there's any questions, I can, obviously. I definitely will let council know how we're doing with that position as it goes forward, so, thank you.
I think, did I see you, Councilwoman?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Holesworth, trust me, I'm not criticizing what you have done in, in any way. Um, and thank you, Mr. First Selectman, for reporting on the grants that we do get. My concern is the grants that we don't get, grants that we don't even know about because we don't have the time and you certainly can't physically have the time to do all the research, neither can the department heads. They hear what comes along. Where a full-time grant writer or a grant writer working under commission is going to dedicate their time to doing just that, as well as applying for and acquiring all of the information necessary for those grants, which, all of which are incredibly time-consuming activities. And yes, Mr. First Selectman, to your comment, that sometimes there is a buy-in, sometimes there's not. So there is money out there that may be available that we are unaware of, that we have not even had time to look for.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree with you, I mean, like this STEEP grant we just got for the animal shelter, there's a recommended buy-in of twenty percent, but not mandatory, so that, we did get that five-hundred-thousand-dollar clearance.
And that's what we did get, we don't know what, don't know what else is out there that we didn't get, that is my point. And I think that is the purpose, in my opinion, of a full-time grant writer who is applying for and dedicating their time to the acquisition of that money or the application.
I know.
Um, which I think would clearly offset the eighty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-eleven dollars.
Yeah, I would disagree with you, Councilwoman Kohat, but you know, we are adding a part-time position. Um, I'm not denouncing what you're saying, I'm just saying that we are adding a part-time position to look into this and maybe see how that goes first, that's all, that's my suggestion.
I'm gonna call the question, Mr. Chair, if I may, one more comment, brief.
Here's the last one.
Thank you. I, 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 just because we were in the process of my, my last comment and we have our HR Director here just wondering if you have any comment to the question that I had asked uh, on what it might cost to seek out uh, any outside help? That wouldn't be increasing the line here, that would just be looking for outside help.
I don't know, I can't answer that because I would definitely look into it, so.
Considering this wasn't something that was brought to your attention, I think that's a valid answer and fair answer. So my only comment would be that uh, even when there is a buy-in, um, I would say chances are a large percentage of the time, if I can make twenty million with a five-million investment or if I can make ten million with a one-million investment, um, that's usually a smart move and also, we're not guaranteeing that we're gonna make that. We're, we're saying that we're gonna look at those moves. Um, and I think ignoring those just because there's a buy-in or just because there is a percentage back to the grant writer uh, is doing the town a disservice. I, I tend to agree that uh, or that, let's see where the part-time position goes. But I also think simultaneously, for something that I probably is within our budget already, we probably don't even need to add something, that that is something that we need to be looking at a lot more seriously um, with some of these bigger grants that could come in, even if there is a buy-in or even if there is a percentage off, because again, we don't have to accept that. We don't have to take them on if we find that they're the wrong opportunity, but let, let these people bring these opportunities to us.
Thank you, I'm gonna call the question, all right, um, I'm just gonna do a roll call, just in case. Uh, Councilmember Persico.
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Kohat.
Aye.
It's Member Mauer.
Nay.
Okay, uh, Vice Chair Lapelis.
Nay.
Councilman Fornacellin, nay. Councilmember O'Rourke.
Nay.
Councilmember Duba.
No.
Councilmember Reed.
Nay.
Councilmember Wales.
Nay.
Okay, uh, the motion fails, uh, two-two-seven. Okay. There any other uh, motions to adjust the budget? Hearing none, I'm going to ask Board of Finance incorporate the changes that we have just made to the municipal budget and provide council with a number hopefully written down.
To Board of Finance.
Oh, excuse me, Department Finance, sorry. Wrong day.
I just on the phone.
I had, I had trial or anything.
So just to be clear, you guys will be focusing on municipal operating, spending, there's contingency and other appropriations. So it's all three of those, basically everything but the Board of Education, thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm going to, I'm going to pass my agenda down. Where, the Director of Finance to fill in the note. I think you're pretty strong. Well, you know, it's not the Oscars, we don't have Ernst &amp; Young here to pass me the magic box with the envelope, but, but we have Ron. Who needs Ernst &amp; Young?
The Oscars.
Thank you very much. I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution twenty-four dash zero four-two, resolve that pursuant to Chapter eight, Section four of the Monroe Town Charter, the Town Council approves the total fiscal year twenty-five municipal expenditure budget of thirty-two million, three-hundred, fifty-four thousand, and seventy-five dollars, which is hereby forwarded to the Board of Finance, is there a second?
Second.
Um, Jason Mauer, second, Mr. First Selectman, anything you gotta say?
I have nothing else.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, we, we have, have talked quite a bit this evening, so is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Mauer.
Uh, one, I'd just like to thank our Finance Department, our Selectmen, all of our department heads. This is, and also my fellow councilmembers, that, this is not an easy process. Every year, there, there's, there's a lot that goes into it and just want everybody to know that that's recognized. Um, I think this is a, a strong town budget, I, I will be supporting it tonight. Um, is it perfect? No, it's never going to be, but we, we're, we are getting there year after year. There are a couple of things that I personally would want the Board of Finance to take a look at once this is passed to them because I, I would have made motions to uh, some motions for increasing the interest revenue as well as looking at our tax collection revenue amounts. Um, but I don't think that's ripe for discussion yet because I think we have some numbers we still need to get in. Um, and the further we wait towards the actual budget, the more accurate we can be on those. So I, I do believe those numbers can go up and therefore the uh, mill rate and proposed budget can go down uh, with the inverse there, so I would like the Board of Finance to take a look at that. Would also like the Board of Finance to take a look at uh, the Board of Ed budget cut that was made by the Selectmen and uh, the adjustments that are going to be made, kind of try to come to a consensus on what, if any, would, would be the appropriate amount to cut there. Um, whether it's just the amount of, of health, uh, healthcare or if there's more there or not. But I think that's left to the Board of Finance. Uh, and then finally, as discussed uh, earlier, I think the Board of Finance should uh, discuss that social work position after the Selectmen has had a chance to uh, have a further discussion with the department head on that one. Uh, but outside of that, like I said, I, I think this is a strong budget on the town side and it has good support.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer, is there any other discussion?
I do have one thing to say, um, Mr. Mauer, thank you and I agree with you, there is a lot of time and energy goes into this. I just would advise that just, there's a little caution in the speech in that the, the Board of Ed is not a budget cut, it's a reduction to an increase, that's all, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney, any other discussion? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution twenty-four dash zero four-two as read before, please say aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes nine to zero. We have no matters of unfinished business this evening, so there is no second public participation. I am adjourned this meeting at eight-thirty PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.